Time to go.
Okay, we're opening this planning board meeting now. And before we begin public comment, I'd like to let you know that we're going to change the agenda a little bit. I think there are some people here maybe about Emerald House, and we're trying to move that up. So what we would like to do, did you pick up an agenda near the door? They're there if you want them. So let me read you the order that we're going to go in, and we can make notes on it. First, we're going to do the public meeting rather than the public hearing. And we will hear from the first applicant, Michael Galasso, the second applicant, Stephen Spitz, and then we're going to go to Emerald House. And from there, we'll go back to David Zenga. And for David Zenga, I realize you're being moved down, but two of the things that are ahead of you are continuances that'll go right by. It's not that far. So a change in the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I believe you need to make a motion to make the change, and we have to vote on it.
Are you going to just?
I'm just telling you, I think that's the procedure. You can do whatever you want, but I believe that's the right procedure.
Could you make the motion?
I don't remember what you said. Say it again.
To change the agenda.
To who?
We're going to change.
It was complicated. I'm sorry I didn't remember it.
One, two, three, four.
I got myself into this one.
But you did. Watch where you step, Jim. That's all.
So we'd like to change the agenda tonight. The public meeting for Michael Galasso's meeting at 5:45 Main Street. And then, which is number two, Stephen Spitz, which he's asking for a continuance, so that'll go really quickly.
Emerald House.
And number three, Emerald House. And number four, David Zenga.
So is there a second?
You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're in excellent order. That's okay? No, good. Now we'll open the meeting. Minutes. Oh, first we'll have public comment. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda? You're welcome to. If you're going to speak, not now, but if you want to speak anytime during the meeting, please come to the stand over there that has the microphone on it. It connects to FCTV. And if you don't use that, then the people at home can hear you. And surprisingly, people do watch. So when you come forward, please give your name and speak into the microphone. So no one's going to do that? Minutes, Paul.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of June 27, 2023, as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you, Paul. Okay, so now, first on the agenda, we're going to, the applicant is Michael Galasso, site plan review application for 71-unit workforce housing building with a 973-foot square foot restaurant at 545 Main Street. And we have, this is now our fourth, our fifth time with this on the agenda. And who is coming forward to ask for the continuation?
Madam Chair, if I may?
You are?
I don't believe the applicant's here because they have submitted a continuance request to the board. So they've asked this matter be continued to the 27th of July. In addition to that, extend the decision deadline that you have, and out two weeks to July 28.
Is it the 27th or the 25th?
Thought it was 27.
25th.
It is the 25th.
Right.
Apologies.
So we need a motion on that?
Yes, you do.
Jim, you're into motions.
I move we extend the meeting for 5:45 Main Street to the 25th. Correct?
Yes.
And an extension of the decision?
And an extension of this decision to the 27th?
28th.
28th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have another request for a continuation. The applicant here is Stephen Spitz, site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment at 15 Cambridge Way. Is there anyone here to speak for that?
He's looking for a continuance?
Yeah.
I move we continue it to the 25th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're to the part that we're really interested in right now, which is a discussion, a planning board discussion of Emerald Project's project presentation. How many people are here for that? Oh. Okay.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Jed Kornok, the town planner. I'm here tonight with Kim Fish, our housing coordinator. We're going to just go through a very brief presentation, approximately 15 minutes, and introduce you to the Emerald Properties Project, in addition to the folks who are sitting in the audience and the folks who'll be watching at home. So for those of you who don't know, the Emerald Properties Project is an effort to bring affordable housing and an accessible play space while preserving historic preservation property to two properties on Davisville Road, number 81 Davisville Road and number 67. To just go through the brief agenda that we'll be running through today, we'll start with an introduction of the project itself. We'll introduce some primary goals, go over some data and some mobile stories. We'll also then touch upon the master plan, the draft conceptual master plan that we have. We'll talk a little bit about process and timeline, and then we'll end with some next steps and some question and answers. This will be my last slide for a little bit, and Kim's going to take the next few, and then I'll come back in the end. But the basic introduction, as I mentioned at the very beginning, is the town understands that there's an affordable housing crisis, and we're currently in the midst of it. So with town-owned land, the municipality's looking to, again, bring these uses together. So on the screen, you see the affordable housing, the idea of an accessible play space, all while trying to preserve the historic Emerald House property and the community gardens that are currently on number 67 Davisville Road. So that's the gist, and as I said, this is Kim's turn, and I'll turn it over to her.
Could we just emphasize that this is land the town owns and has owned for how long?
I believe for over 15 years, at least.
Yeah, 81 was purchased in 2007, and 67 was purchased in 95.
Thank you. I think a lot of towns are trying to use their own land to address the affordable housing crisis, and Falmouth is among them. Thank you.
I just have a question. What's the planning board's role in approving this process, this project?
So technically, you don't really have a role at this stage, but are, the reason we're here tonight is to essentially spread the word.
Okay, so this is basically to get it out to the public. We don't even have a vote on this issue.
Right.
We also, if you have any comments.
I wasn't sure. I couldn't understand why we're doing it, but I didn't understand why.
But also, if you had any comments or ideas or suggestions to bring back to the...
We don't have a role in this decision. This is a ZBA issue.
I understand.
I just...
But the select board wanted us to meet with the stockholders for more input.
But could we also say that this is very much in line with the local comprehensive plan, which is something the planning board does? And the planning board staff are essential to the project and are the ones who've been helping to create it and are moving it forward.
That's why we're here.
Right. So on that note, our primary goals for the project are to create a consensus around a master plan for the properties, address the ongoing housing crisis, and develop more accessible recreation opportunities, preserve the existing historical and community resources, and ensure the public is included in the process. This slide here shows the area median income, which is set by Housing and Urban Development. In Barnstable County right now, it's, well, this slide is based on the 2022 AMIs, the numbers. They just released the 2023, which is $124,300, but they haven't updated all the numbers yet. So we're going to go with the 2022 data. And this just shows that we have also included the 100 and 120%, which is greatly needed in our community. The state doesn't provide funding for the development of it, but the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund does. The CP, up to 100% with the CP funds, but we can go beyond that with non-CP funds. The next slide are the rent limitations, which is also set by HUD. And as you can see, that an average family, let's say a three-bedroom, parents, two children, at the 80% area median income, their rent would be set at $2,261. And this is what's considered, quote unquote, affordable.
Do you have any idea how affordable that actually is compared to wages?
Well, if you go back a slide, for a family, a household of four, at the 80% median area median income, they can make no more than $86,950.
Isn't that really skewed by all the retired well-to-do people here?
Yes. But it's the numbers that the government puts out, so it's what we're stuck with. And this is what's considered affordable. And when you look at the numbers, you can see how difficult it is for an average family to reside here, even with those numbers, and even building affordable housing. This slide shows the enterprise. They did local stories that it was faces of affordable housing, and they wanted to get the word out of just what a crisis we are in. And they continue to have stories. Families, individuals that can't find housing for various reasons, can't afford it, there's no inventory, and it crosses, it's across the board with their income levels. So the properties, what do we know? As you know, this project includes two parcels on Davisville Road adjacent to East Falmouth School. 67 Davisville Road is in the public use zoning district. It's just under five acres, and it was acquired in 1995 for public recreation and conservation. It has Article 97 protection on it, which means it cannot be used for any other purpose other than public recreation and conservation without town meeting and state legislature approvals. 81 Davisville Road is in the residential A zoning district. It's just under four acres, and it was acquired in 2007 for public recreation and municipal Technical assistance. The town requested and was granted free technical assistance from Mass Housing Partnership. They retained the services of Bowler Engineering to complete a due diligence report describing the site, zoning, resource areas, and infrastructure, and also created conceptual design plans that help show how the pieces of the puzzle might fit together. In the due diligence report dated 2021, it was found that the project would need to be done through Chapter 40B. The septic system assumed to be enhanced nitrogen removal and designed for 44 bedrooms. 200-foot riverfront resource area extends into the properties on the western side, and Jed will talk more about that when he talks about the master plan. The property's conceptual design dated 2023. Accessible play space remains on Article 97 land, which is 67 Davisville Road. All housing would be located on 81 Davisville Road. Emerald House and Community Gardens remain in place.
Kim, could you explain for people who don't know why it needs to be a 40B?
In order to put density there, to put more units there, would have to go through the 40B process. But the town would require not just, with Chapter 40B, you only need, a developer only needs to do 25% affordable, but the plan is for the town to have 100% affordable, not just the 25%.
So the density would have been what, and it goes to what?
Excuse me?
The density change. Under current zoning, without 40B, what would it be? And with 40B, what might it be?
I don't know.
I believe the area is one-acre zoning. Most in town is.
Yeah.
So four houses, something like that?
Right. And with 40B, it can be?
Forty-four?
Forty-four to...
Bedrooms.
Forty-four bedrooms, and it can go with the, possibly up to 90.
Thank you.
Regarding the septic, it could go higher with Chapter 40B, but we're not looking at that at all. And Jed will take over the next for the master plan. He'll speak about the planning aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on this slide, sort of a zoomed-out version, you can see that we've tried to incorporate all of the components that I spoke about earlier. The idea of maintaining the Emerald House property, the community gardens, and then adding the play space and the affordable housing. So the next slide sort of is a zoomed-in version. It's a much better, much better angle, or at least a picture of what's happening on the site. So on the, I'm going to start from the west and work my way east. On the west-hand side is the area that's closest to Great Pond. That area shaded in white is determined to be essentially...
I believe that's Green Pond.
Green Pond. Essentially undevelopable land. There's two reasons. One, this purple line here indicates a 200-foot riverfront boundary, so of course, we wanted to respect that. And there's, I'm not sure if you can see it on the screen, but there's topography lines in this area. So it makes development within that area a bit more challenging. So again, we just tried to reduce the amount of development that would occur on that side. And then shown in yellow is what we would consider to be the affordable housing, again, located on 81 Davisville Road. And the accessible play space on 67 Davisville, shown in orange. Community gardens, shown in green, and the Emerald House property, shown in that blue So how's this all going to work? There are two projects. We spent a lot of time on the affordable housing, so we'll take a bit of time to articulate some of the components of the accessible play space. So both projects would essentially be an RFP process. In the accessible play space, that would be funded by potential donation funding, but also CPC funding as well. It would be overseen by the Recreation Department in conjunction with the Commission on Disabilities. Meanwhile, on the other side, Paul, do you have a question?
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
I have to go back to the last slide if I can.
Sure.
It appears on the yellow side, there's 22 units. At the two-bedroom units, that's the 44 septic thing. What's the red area then? Is that going to be developed as well?
Sorry, one more time?
The pinkish-red area, what is that going to be?
Is that going to be developed with housing as well?
No.
It's play space.
This is the accessible play space. That's the recreation area.
Entire area?
Yes, this, this...
It has a deed restriction on it that it has to be used. You didn't hear that?
The whole thing has a deed restriction on it.
But no, but the, no. But that one has a deed restriction. It has to be recreation.
Okay.
Right.
So you're going to go out and request someone to do a master plan for that number of units? Would they change the number of units?
So what we're doing right now is we're bringing this idea of this number of bedrooms, this range of bedrooms and the number of units to the public and saying, what do you think? So that's part of why we're here tonight, to try and get a sense for, are we overestimating? Are we underestimating? Should we go higher with density? Is that the right number, et cetera? So we're just trying to get a sense for what people are thinking about these sites.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, two projects, be very brief. The affordable housing will be a separate project. That will also be through an RFP process. That's what we're essentially doing now. We're getting all of that feedback, and then we will work back to the select board to provide them the input that we received to help them develop an RFP in the future. That will be a 40B project, as Kim has mentioned, and will be overseen by the Planning Department, but likely other departments as well. So the process... Oh, sorry.
Jed, when you presented this to the select board, did they comment on your range of density?
There was some questions about the range of density, specific to septic, and of course, you know, being mindful of water quality. So yes, the answer is yes, they did comment on it. But I believe that they're trying to, you know, just listen to what the public has to say, take all that in once we're at the end of that. So I'll get to that in just a slide or two. So as you can see up on the screen, we've got a multi-step process. We're currently in step number two, which is all about outreach. This is where we bring everything forward to everyone to try and explain what this project might be all about and to get the feedback. We then will report back to the select board approximately in September. That's when we will be trying to figure out what those next steps are and what the details of the RFP will look like. Then obviously, we move into construction phases. So timeline for these two projects, as you know, we're right in the middle here in July. In August, we plan to hold a public meeting at the East Falmouth Elementary School, where we invite the entire community to come and essentially just hear this presentation one more time, and invite them to go to our website, which we'll show in just a second, and provide us the feedback that we need so that we can report that back to the select board. And ultimately, in September, the two projects will then break, as I described just a few minutes ago. So these are some of the draft elements that we have right now for the RFP. These are the, essentially, the talking points that we want the public to provide us feedback on. So they, I won't go through all of them because I know we're pressed for time, but starting right at the top, you know, we've got this idea of a range of bedrooms. The whole idea of, well, we want to do a minimum of 44 bedrooms, but maybe there's a maximum of 90. And again, that's not units, it's bedrooms. We also want to be mindful of the range of incomes that we're looking for. Local preference, things like energy efficiency. And then ultimately, the discussion about septic is really an important one, and water quality. So those are the types of things that we're trying to, again, just hear feedback on. Are people really concerned about water quality? And does that, how will that play into the number of bedrooms and the density that will be, that the select board might be looking for at this site? So what we ask folks to do is do two things. One, visit the project website. So it's here up on the screen. Not sure if this PDF will allow us to do it. It will? This is great. So this is our project webpage, our website, I'm sorry. So this homepage essentially provides all of the information about the project, offers folks an opportunity to subscribe for updates, which is really helpful. So I'll go over that in a second, but this is where we communicate with the public about upcoming events, things that they need to know. Here's an opportunity to email the Planning Department with their comments. They can add anything they want, and we're going to be providing all of that feedback to the select board. And then this important one, this leave feedback, will bring us to this link here, which I'll just click on. And it's a short questionnaire. So 10 questions. We ask people to just fill in answers to these questions. Where are you from? You can submit. You can go to the next question. How long have you lived in Falmouth? On and on and on. But eventually, you get to a question about the actual site itself. And then we ask open-ended questions about what can we do to make this better? What are some concerns that you might have? So the project, the project website's all about being able to communicate with the public, but also take in their feedback. Absolutely.
We also have hard copies. Anyone can pick up at the Planning Department for anyone that doesn't have access to the website. And we ask just that they draw them back off at the Planning Department.
But you're particularly looking for comment.
We are.
Is there anyone here who would like to comment on the project so far? We'll ask the board in a minute. No? Board? John?
I just want to clarify a couple of things. First, this is going to be a rental project for the, for the housing, not homeownership. Second, as a 40B, will they allow you to rent up to 120% of median income, or is it limited at 100%?
If we don't get any state funding, we can do up to 120.
And then finally, who's going to own and manage this property after it's built?
That, well, that's what we'll find out when we do go through the RFP process.
Does that mean you don't want the town to own it and rent it? Okay.
The land may stay in the town, under the town, we may just lease it out to the developer. And we'd really like to keep that gray area that you saw non-buildable. So a restriction could be put on that. So these are all the wrinkles that we are going to iron out later on, and this is the important part of, the civic engagement is hearing those comments about those specifics. So we can bring that to the select board.
As an RFP, are you going to limit it to 44 bedrooms, or are you going to leave it unlimited?
It depends, because based on what the public comment is, the select board really is going to take that into consideration. It could be significantly reduced. We don't even know if the project will go forward, period. We're really just at the information gathering stage.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions, Bob?
Yeah, I've been getting a lot of comments from people that live down there, and the overriding comment is it's way too dense. And they're concerned about the traffic right now. It takes sometimes two or three light changes to get out of there, especially when school is in session. You're also placing this further into the neighborhood down Davisville, which is pretty much is all single-family residences, and to put 22 units smack dab in that section there? They're really not for that. As far as the water quality goes, Green Pond, I've had a mooring down there for 25 years, and it's in rough shape. I've already seen algae blooms, the big green carpets already. I keep a minnow trap hanging off my boat. I'm getting nothing in it this year but jellyfish, where I used to get eels, juvenile fluke, minnows, all that. If you scoop up the mud, it smells like septic. I mean, it's in really tough shape. And I think we all know, we've been through enough site plans reviews and about denitrification systems, that we know that they're not all they're cracked up to be. So to put that dense number of units in that location is one thing. And as the planning board, we've talked about where we want to see density, and yes, this is a village center, but when we talk about village centers, we're also talking about sewer systems, and there's no sewer there yet. So those are some of the concerns that I've heard from people.
Jim?
Yeah, two questions. One, you mentioned the gray area. Were you referring to the 200-foot setback from the Rivers Act, which I don't believe you can develop anyway?
There's developable land back there.
But isn't that within the 200 feet from the Rivers Act?
The purple line is the end of...
That's the only 200 feet there.
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was the whole gray area. Now I understand. Thanks for clearing that up. And my next question is, what denitrification system are you proposing, and what, how many parts per million does it get to?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
Great question, though.
Well, yeah, I have a question. The intention is to have 70% local preference. How are you going to enforce that? Isn't that dependent on the funding sources?
No, when it goes out to lottery, that's where the 70% local preference comes in. And say they hired a lottery agent like Hack of Cape Cod, we would be reviewing all of where those applications are coming from, and it's at that level, the lottery.
So that's enforceable. Thank you.
Pam?
Any chance that they would put in a individual sewage treatment plant there?
Could be.
Are you going to pump it?
We just, we're too early in the stage to do that, and it depends on what the developer would want, whoever was awarded the RFP. But I think that would be, that would be resolved prior to.
Yeah, and likely it would be linked to density, which is some of that.
What's the gallon, no, to follow up on that question, you're going to need the gallons per day.
Right.
Or to answer that question. So it's the same question, it just wasn't, how many gallons per day you're doing?
Right.
Because the problem is, if I understand it correctly, you get too many gallons per day, and you actually have to have an engineer run the plant, and it gets a lot more expensive to do it. So what, the gallons per day you are at, do you have a feeling on that?
Well, that's the thing. And so, I mean, to Bob's point, you know, we, Kim and I have met with the East Falmouth Village Association. We heard loud and clear that, you know, they're not in favor of higher density. So that's really the topic that we're trying to focus on now, is that whole idea of where's the comfort level for density, if any at all? Because I think that's going to be dictating, obviously, the type of septic system and what you might have for gallons per day. So it's really just unknown at this time, but we're listening.
I'd like to build on Bob's point about the density and where it is. We've tried, town meeting was really, really clear about restricting much higher density to where we have a sewer. And we don't have sewers there. And it's interesting that the Select Board thinks that if it's a 40B, that they can control it, because you can't. The thing about 40B is, the state controls it. So they're not going to have the same concerns we do. So the town putting its own land up and saying it's going to be a 40B opens Pandora's box to an uncontrollable situation. I wonder if that's a good idea? It doesn't sound like a great idea.
Well, and I think the control is, is the slide that you're looking at now. It's, it's developing an RFP that is, you know, essentially controls the type of development that you're looking for. And so that's what our job is, to essentially try and figure out where that, where those elements come into play with the RFP, to provide that back to the Select Board. But I, but I hear your point.
It would depend on what 40B developer you have.
Right.
I mean, a commercial 40B developer building three to one, to me, it's a bobtail dog chasing its tail. You'll never get any further. In fact, I started looking up some data that 40B was enacted in 1969, 54 years ago. You know, how many towns out of 351 towns in Massachusetts, 61 towns? 109 have met that in 54 years.
Out of 351.
Out of 350, 361. So, you know, it really, really isn't working that well when you're building, when you're building three to one.
It's a developer's law.
Yeah.
Not an affordable housing law.
But there are entities that build 100% affordable. You're not building three to one. So I think those are the entities that I heard from people that have contacted me about it. Those are the entities that they would like to see. They're not against housing there. But they're against a huge, huge development.
Sure.
So that's, that's our feedback so far.
That's great. Thank you. So again, one more plug for the website. It's, I'm just going to scroll down, Emerald Properties Falmouth.com. So I encourage everybody to visit that webpage, sign up for updates, provide the feedback, et cetera.
John?
Jed, just for the viewing audience at home, what is RFP? What does that mean?
Request for Proposals. That's what it means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rural Free postage.
That's RFP.
We all set?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both, very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're back on our agenda. Which means, we're moving to a public hearing. The applicant is David Zenga.
John's turning blue here.
Oh, no.
A definitive plan application to create a one-lot subdivision at Zero Beagle Lane.
I refuse myself before on this.
Oh, right. Who will be speaking for this project?
Good evening. My name is Dave Zenga. My name is Dave Zenga. I'm here with my wife.
It looks like a microphone, but it isn't really. It connects only to FCTV. So to connect to us, you have to speak up.
My name is Dave Zenga. I'm here with my wife, Grace. And I think, as most of you know, we were here a little over a month, month or two ago, submitting a preliminary plan for a single-home subdivision on Beagle Lane. The lot is 1.4 acres. Our plan is to put a single-family home for she and I to live in. Just a little background information, it's on previously agricultural-only designated land that was subdivided, I believe, back in 1981. Our plan, again, is to try to put a single-family home on there for us to move into. The majority of other homes in the neighborhood are on a fraction of the size lot that we're proposing. And we just hope that we, that you folks feel, and others feel, that that's a reasonable request.
Okay, we'll have comment from the board, and then comment from, from the public? We'll start down this end. Pam?
No, I mean, it seems like a very reasonable, rational, you have a huge parcel of land there compared to your neighbors. And for you to be able to build a house and live out your dreams seems quite reasonable to me.
Paul?
No comments based on the last meeting.
Jim?
No comment?
No.
John?
He's refused.
He's refusing right here.
Okay, I have a comment. I'm familiar with that, because I used to volunteer at People for Cats. So, boy, you're going to have a really convenient location there. That's great. And it would appear to be in very good order, the whole application. Jed may have further thoughts on that. But it looks as if, although it's a good application and very solid, there are a few things that are missing on the list of waivers. And I think, do you have the comments from the Planning Department? So you do have that.
Jed, did you wish to comment?
Actually, before we move on, it may be worthwhile just to read the public hearing notice and indicate the number of folks who were mailed a notice. Procedural.
Okay, notice of this, public meeting notice was published on 6/23/23 and 6/30/23, and 20 addresses were notified by regular mail.
Thanks. So, yes, Madam Chair, you had mentioned that there may be some missing waivers. And so I spent a little bit of time today going through the list, which is placed in front of me. There are a number of waivers that I think that it would be advisable for planning staff to work with the applicant on, to just firm up the final list. Because I believe the letter only included, I want to say, five or six of them, and I've got a rough count of, you know, just to be thorough, I've got a rough count of like 12 or 13, so I think it's.
Could I ask you a question about those? They're not likely to hold it up, though.
No, not likely to hold up, just to be.
Documented.
Procedurally sound. But included in your packet is a referral from our Engineering Division, which, I apologize, I'm not sure if we've sent it to the applicant just yet, but I believe we received it just the other day. There's also a referral from the Health Department and, I believe, the Water Department. None seem to have any outstanding comments that would be concerning for the board. And so, there's not much more I can add, other than, you know, they've submitted all the necessary paperwork that you had asked for in the preliminary stage. That was the easement language for both the future roadway widening and the drainage easement, as well as the performance guarantee for all of the property bounds. I will note that we may have to just reach out to the surveyor to get a little bit more clarification on the actual bounds themselves and their locations. But again, minor thing, and we can do that in this, this week or next.
Any members of the public would like to comment on this project?
Gretchen Clausen, Beagle Lane. As I said before, I think that dissolving the covenant that is on these properties, these seven parcels of land, and opening them up for development would be a giant and huge mistake.
Would you like to describe the covenant?
Pardon?
Do you want to describe the covenant? Do you want to explain it at all?
You know what it is, right?
No? No, we don't.
Actually, we have heard it described in further meetings. It was discussed in the first.
The covenant has been in place for over 40 years.
Excuse me?
The covenant has been in place for over 40 years. And up until this point, all those parcels of land have only been able to use for agricultural purposes. By deciding that somebody can build on one of those parcels, will open up all the rest of the parcels, which is quite a number of acres, to further development.
Thank you.
I believe we have to have Jed read the covenant to represent it accurately. He did before. We've all heard it, and he needs to do it again.
Pam didn't remember it.
Sure, for the record, Jed Kornok, Town Planner. So this is, this is for everyone's edification. So this is the A&R Plan that was approved back in 1981 or 1982, I believe it was '82. That created this lot here, Lot 3, that, which is what we're describing tonight. And on the plan itself, just zoom in here, this is the language which sort of starts the story, if you will, and I'll just read it for the publics. At a meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board on January 5, 1982, it was voted that approval under the subdivision control law was not required because a waiver of frontage was granted under Section 81R, Mass General Law, Chapter 41. This endorsement and waiver was granted because and subject to the terms and conditions of the covenant executed by Frank Figurito and dated January 7, 1982, a copy of which instrument is made a part of this plan and recorded here with. So, this is the decision from the Board from 1982, which, again, references the restrictive covenant. And this is the covenant itself. I will not read this, but folks can certainly stop by the Planning Office if they have questions about the covenant. But I will just make note of a certain section, if I can find it quick. Here we are. Hereby, so I, we, do hereby permanently and irrev- irrev- I'm just going to skip that word, because.
Irrevocably?
Irrevocably, yes, thank you. Restrict the use of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and Parcel A, 2, and 4, personal agricultural purposes. The aforementioned lots and parcels shall not be used for residential or commercial purposes until such time as the Planning Board approves a subdivision plan of land, which creates the frontage necessary under the, under the zoning bylaws and Subdivision Control Act, for whatever land uses are then permitted in this area. So that is the process by which the applicant is getting the frontage and is essentially abiding by the language of the covenant, because they have, supplied a subdivision plan of land, a definitive subdivision plan, which you are describing here and hearing about this evening.
So this is the process they're following?
This is our understanding, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I have none. Any here?
I just think, my understanding, the way I read that, that it's only for this one lot?
Correct.
Right.
Or, I'm sorry.
One through seven, or one through eight.
The covenant applies to.
No, but if we approve a definitive plan for only one lot.
That's correct.
Okay, that's the, it doesn't approve all of them.
That's correct.
That's the only thing I thought should need to be made clear.
Just for Lot 3.
It's just the one lot.
Right, because by, through this process, they're creating the frontage for Lot 3.
Ms. Clausen's concern is that it sets a precedent, but it doesn't necessarily do that. It's just the one lot. Thank you. So that's as far as we can go tonight. We won't close the hearing. We'll, we'll keep it open and come back after you've worked with the Planning Department on the waivers and documenting that, and then you'll be back. When would be good to come back?
I think the next meeting would be fine. The 25th.
25th? Is that possible?
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Please come here.
Are the waivers that are being asked for available to the public now?
I can make them available as of tomorrow. They'll be in the file.
And they'll be available at, on July 25?
And they include, I mean, I can just read a couple of them?
Yeah. It was a general understanding of what we're talking about.
So, for example, one of them requires that four copies of the profile plan and cross-section drawings, as defined in Section 30512, yada, 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 be submitted with the application. So a profile plan and a cross-section are typically those plans for construction of a road. And the applicant is not proposing to do any sort of construction on the road whatsoever. So a waiver would be asked for to not have to file that type of plan.
But of things on that list that it would appear and be visible in the neighborhood, it looked as if the sidewalk was the most visible. And they're waiving that?
Correct.
Or they're asking to waive it?
They would be asking for a waiver to not have to put in a sidewalk. Because again, they're not proposing any roadway work here.
Or paving the road or anything else?
Correct.
Because it's now a dirt road.
Correct. And we heard from the neighbors at the preliminary stage that they wanted to keep the neighborhood as is.
As is.
They weren't looking for any roadway improvements. So another waiver would be submission of an environmental impact statement. That's a requirement of the subdivision control law, and so the applicant would be asking to waive that requirement, because they're just building one lot. Typically, that's for a larger subdivision. Are there, a lot of them really focusing on the roadway itself and the types of submissions that an applicant would have to do if they were constructing a roadway. Also putting in utilities. So the utilities are all in place along Beagle Lane. So there's really no need. So there's no, there's no need to construct a new water line or do any sort of utility work, because all that stuff is in place.
So the waivers are essentially asking to maintain the integrity of what's there, to not, to not change it.
Correct.
So.
Their documentation, really, that it's going to remain that way.
Yeah. Procedural.
Okay, and so you'll be back, I guess, in two weeks. Thank you.
So if, if I may, and, you know, I touched upon it a little bit earlier, included in your packet is the documentation that the applicant submitted for the easement language. So if you have any questions about that, we're happy to entertain any questions about that. I believe that we should be sending it over to Town Council, just to make sure that it's written in the right way. But essentially, the easement language grants the town.
It's the 24 feet that we talked about.
Correct. The ability to widen the road if and when the town decides to do that sometime in the future.
So it's just acknowledging something that might be true anyway.
Correct.
Mostly documentation. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Here, we have a special permit, but I would assume this has been continued also, so that the special permit related to 545 Main Street would also be continued to July 25, under the motion that was made earlier.
So just to be clear, you need to make a motion to continue the public hearing for the definitive plan to July 27. Vote on that. And then, if you want us to, you can direct us to provide you a positive motion for the next meeting, if and when you're ready for it.
Oh, okay. So.
I'm confused. Are we talking about two different things here?
No.
Charlie started to move on, I'm just trying to bring us back.
Okay, I just wondered, okay. Couldn't, I wasn't sure what we're talking about. I got it.
Okay, first, I think what I'd like to do is to ask for a positive motion for the next meeting on the David Zenga application. And to continue the public hearing until July 25.
Correct.
So if we could have a motion on that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. My next question's you, Jed. I think, was continuing of the special permit application part of the earlier motion? They just go together?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have to do that. So we're moving on now to, in a public meeting. The applicant is Mark Satharis, a site plan review, probably mispronounced, a site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment at 141 Carriage Shop Road.
Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Satharis.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, the public hearing notice.
Oh, the notice.
Public meeting notice, I apologize.
Please be out of order.
There it is. Public notice of this meeting was published on June 23, 2023, and 15 addresses were notified by regular mail.
And do you wish for me to speak about myself or the project?
Introduce yourself and then describe the project.
Because if I speak about myself, we'll be here all night. Because if I speak about myself, we'll be here all night.
I'd just like to see a site. I'm confused as where the front of the house is and the street. Is there a site plan with this?
I think he's gonna start at the top.
It's not my computer.
We usually see that first and then the plans.
Yeah, it's like-
I'm just confused, I can't figure it out.
The foundation's installed, the house was, has already been built. The permit was closed when I got occupancy, and I decided I wanted to, the original plans for the property was a four-bedroom home. I installed a different home. It's a two-bedroom downstairs with enough room upstairs that's used for storage for a third bedroom, and the garage was permitted, and I want to re-permit the garage with the apartment. So I get the third bedroom for my family above there, for my adult children. The lot's over an acre. I have very minimal lot coverage.
I'd just like to point out that the garage structure will be attached to the main dwelling with a breezeway, and the building commissioner has determined that it's considered attached.
Attached, and I think that's clear when we see the elevations. And the foundation.
Yeah, the, that's the as-built of the foundation. The breezeway's already installed except for the roof.
Does anyone go through the rest of the project?
The project's complete, landscaping, driveway. The house is installed. Oh, about the structure. The structure's a 32 by 26 garage for my two vehicles, and there are two egresses to the second-floor apartment. This is the actual framing plan. And the second page. It's the actual apartment layout, which is a one-bedroom with a living area, bathroom, and a kitchen, and a staircase down in the rear, enclosed staircase inside the garage, and a second egress to the right toward the front of the house.
I'm curious about something. When I was looking at this plan before, I wonder about the little dark room there. See right behind the kitchen, between the kitchen and the next room over? There's a room, although it could have a window, it doesn't. What, what is that room?
The kitchen in the staircase.
No, at the back, up at the top.
Yeah.
You can walk into it. It's a walk-in closet. Is it just storage?
That's a refrigerator in the kitchen. You talking about that right there or this here? That's a lot.
The one in the middle at the ba- at the top.
That's the refrigerator?
Yeah.
Yeah. The 310 room.
It's just showing the refrigerator.
No, I think she's talking about the room that's behind the refrigerator.
There's no room.
Right.
Is that-
Oh, that's the sta-
That's the stairway?
Yeah, that's the, that's the problem. You don't show the stairs. I was having trouble figuring out what we're looking at.
That's just that a stair's going down into the garage.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
That's kind of what I thought, but it didn't show the stairs, so.
Yeah. Thank you, I just couldn't figure it out.
So. Looking at, from the street?
Yeah.
On the plot plan, it shows the existing house and existing porch, so you see the, is it the Gable End with the front porch? Is that what you see from the street?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a chalet-style home.
Okay.
It's a lodge-style home.
Okay, and then the garage, is the Gable End also gonna be facing the street?
Yes, it is with the same proud roof.
Okay, same, same pitch and all that?
Same 12 pitch.
Okay, yeah.
With the prow, same architecture.
Okay.
Same siding.
Mm-hmm. Good, okay. That's all I got.
John, any comment?
No, that looks good.
Jim?
Nope.
Paul, Pam? No, it seems to touch all the bases. It's the right size, both for the lot and for going with the house. You've ticked off every point that's required in the accessory bylaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly makes it very easy for us. Judd, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, other than just pointing out the fact that it meets all the requirements and it's, the calculation sheet's included in your packet, so.
All right, I have a question for you, actually. This might not be the right time for it, but here we are. We get the site plan review-
Yep.
-with many opportunities to check a box or mark a circle or just, you know, provide information, and they're all blank.
On the application itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that, see if it just doesn't come over when it prints.
It could, right.
It might not be printing.
Because it's a radio button?
Oh, so on your version, you, you did something.
Well, when they submit this, they might click it off. I'm not sure, but when we go to print it, it might not show.
Right.
Okay, because the information appears later on, so it doesn't remain an open question. It just means when you're looking at it, your first impression is, gee, they didn't answer a single question.
Yeah, no, I, I think there just might be a printing error when it goes from the PDF to the printing, some areas.
So Paul's comment is, why include it?
To keep you on your toes.
Yes, okay, it worked. I think we're all-
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Would you-
I think what we're saying is, you've looked at it and it meets all the criteria, and the plan shows it meets the criteria. There's some holes in the application, but you've determined that they have been met. Is that what we're saying here? Okay.
Yes, that, that-
That answers, yes.
Is what we're saying.
So we can expect a positive motion for next meeting?
Well, we can, yes, a positive motion for the next meeting, and that will be that. See, what else we have here?
And for the clarity for the applicant, the next meeting, you don't need to be here. There is essentially approving your project in a formal way at the next meeting.
Okay. My, my good-
Good to go.
Good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Bye, everybody.
Remaining applicant for the evening is Conserv Group Incorporated. This is the Police Academy Police Training Facility Site Plan Review Application to Construct a 28,681-square-foot, two-story municipal police training facility at 81 Technology Park Drive.
Notice.
Notice?
Oh, a notice is. Madam Chair, the public meeting notice for this project was published on 6/23/23, and either by the's been notified by regular mail.
I'm speaking for the project.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Nickerson. I'm an attorney here in town, and I represent Woods Hole Land Holdings, which is the owner of 81 Technology Park Drive. See the site here. I wanted to also hand you to the board, these were emailed over earlier. This is a landscaping plan, as well as smart-
Oh.
Are we just getting them now?
Are we getting them now?
You are getting-
How do you want us to deal with that?
Well, so at the next meeting, I figure at the next meeting, you'll obviously be continuing, and then we can review them in more detail.
So you'll put them up there so we can see them?
Exactly, we just don't have digital.
I need to look at these now.
These will be for you.
So take a boom with me?
No.
Cast them out at the end of class.
If the board would like, I do have these on a thumb drive, if you'd like me to throw up the architecturals and the landscaping plans.
Yeah, we'll see them up here.
Yeah.
So just for context, this is the building that we're proposing, that you'll see in the architectural plans when you review them more formally. This view is from the west-looking east, and this is from the south-looking north on the site. The second page of the architectural plans include dimensioned architecturals that show the elevation of the buildings and the height of the building. Maximum height is 34 feet 10 inches, which is in conformity with zoning. And the third sheet of the architectural plans includes the floor plans. See, it's a two-story building, based on your view of the elevations. The second floor is the first set of drawings there, followed by the first, and then the basement floor. This is a police training facility, so it's classroom space. It's gonna also be space for offices, breakout rooms, lavatory rooms, simulation rooms for police training purposes. In the basement is a training space for a gym, as well as locker rooms and storage areas. So back onto the site plan itself, this was developed by McKenzie Engineering. Austin from McKenzie Engineering is here this evening. He can go into some more detail on this as the board might like. Also here is Roy Cardemiani. He is from Conserv. He will be the builder on this project. And David Aubrey, who is the manager and member of Woods Hole Land Holdings, which is the owner of this entire parcel, is also here this evening. Mr. Aubrey and his wife, Oksana, are the members of Limited Liability Company, and their family, they live here in Falmouth as well. So the board may remember this from a prior hearing. We actually were here previously for a approval-not-required endorsement, which the board voted on the 22nd of May, and it was signed on the 23rd of May. So this is the entire site. You may recall that there's an existing building, 81 Technology Park Drive, and the approval-not-required plan created Parcel A, which is the existing building, and Parcel B, which is gonna be the site of the new building. This is a detail of the existing conditions at the site presently. You can see that there are parking fields that serve the existing building, as well as a driveway at the northwest section of the existing parcel, and a secondary driveway down here at the southwest portion. This is in a light industrial B zoning district, and based on the change in the zoning bylaws that occurred in November, we split this into two parcels to comply with the zoning requirement that there only be one use on a parcel. And so that was the reasoning that we came in for the split in the A and R, which the board voted. That approval-not-required plan is up at Land Court right now. This is Land Court property, so ultimately that's gonna be approved by the Land Court and then formally recorded with the Land Court records. Again, this is an LIB district, so our proposed use on this new Parcel B, here's the approval-not-required plan, the proposed use is for an educational use as a police training facility, which is a by-right use in this zoning district. We believe it's pretty clear that a educational facility for police officers is something that's pretty important, especially in Cape Cod, especially in light of some of the newspaper reports last week about the need for more police officers in town, so that we have more officers available to us who might be trained here and then decide to stay here. This is gonna be a facility to train officers on the Cape and for the islands. There's currently no facility like that. There was some training that occurred out at the base, but that's no longer in operation at this time. Submitted by email today was a letter from Bob Ferrulo, who is the, who's in charge, the executive director of the Municipal Police Training Committee, which is a division of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That organization, that subdivision of the Commonwealth, is going to be the operator of this facility. They currently have a lease with Mr. Aubrey's Limited Liability Company to develop and build this facility for that dedicated purpose. So by the approval-not-required plan endorsement, we have this new Parcel B, which is 3.09 acres of land that is gonna be dedicated for the use of our new building. This sheet shows the proposed development for the new building. Building is shown at the rear of Parcel B. The building is going to be 28,681 square feet of floor area. There are going to be 60 parking spots for the new building, which is calculation based on two spots approximately per 1,000 square feet of area of the building. Parking field is as shown here on the southeast portion of the new parcel. You might note that there is a larger, large wildlife corridor on the far east portion of the parcel, which we're preserving because we're required to, and that will be preserved as, is appropriate. And so the parking is kind of laid out to respect that wildlife area. The access for the new building is going to be over the existing driveway, which runs over the northwest portion of the Parcel B. That's also gonna remain access for 81 Technology Park Drive. Just so the board's aware, obviously, this is all owned by the same Limited Liability Company, to the extent that we need to have any easements or any agreements in place to facilitate, you know, continued access by both buildings, that's certainly within our control and that we're going to maintain. The new building is designed to be dimensionally compliant in all respects with setbacks. It's gonna be well outside the side yard and rear yard setbacks. It's well outside the front yard setback, minimum requirement by zoning. Again, we're gonna have two-way vehicle access going up this driveway. Austin can speak a little bit more about the design and how a fire truck would fit and how other emergency vehicles could get in and out over that access. Austin also submitted a letter based on the 2012 ITE Trip Generation Manual. It's expected that this new use is gonna generate approximately 200 trips per day, with 25 trips in the morning peak hours and 25 in the evening peak hours. And the layout is essentially set up to have this parking be dedicated for our proposed use all on Parcel B. There's a landscaping plan, which was also submitted just today. That will be for the board's review, obviously. The, the majority of the vegetation on this site is really being preserved. All around the corners in the north and east section of the site are gonna be maintained where the vegetation is. To the extent that there's parking aisles, there will be some vegetation included in there, some plantings as well. The Board of Health referral, we know, is pending. Currently, we're working with the Board of Health in discussion about whether a variance would be appropriate for maintenance of the existing septic system, or whether we would be looking into a shared system for both buildings on the site. That's still in discussion. The variance hearing is open in front of the Board of Health. Austin also submitted some stormwater calculations with the intent being to maintain any stormwater runoff wholly on the site, on Parcel B. And we hope that the board is gonna find that the site design and the layout is appropriate, given the area in the Technology Park. We have a letter of support from Associates of Cape Cod, which was submitted to the file, Associates of Cape Cod being the current occupant of the existing building. They're in support of the project. They think that it would be a good idea to have a presence such as a Municipal Police Academy in this area. Again, Mr. Ferrulo submitted a letter of support as well, and we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have, but at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Austin to go over some of the details of the site plan specifically with you.
Thank you. For the record, Austin Chardia with McKenzie Engineering Group. We prepared the land surveying and engineering plans for this project. Jeff went through most of the speaking points essentially, but I'll just quickly run through a few things. The, the pass was originally created as part of the Tech Park Drive development, which was approved by the Cape Cod Commission. So there's kind of an overlaying covenant, which has some zoning restrictions as well. So these tables we prepared here on this plan just show compliance with both the Cape Cod Commission covenants for the subdivision, as well as the local zoning bylaws, whichever was more restrictive, essentially. So really, this, this site development plan here is, we essentially took both existing lots into account. The existing stormwater for this site is essentially, 100% of it is captured, and it drains to this natural kettle pond up here, which is gonna be maintained and used for this project as well. We prepared calculations for that, for the new development. It's gonna be fully compliant with stormwater management regulations. We prepared calculations for that, for the new development. It's gonna be fully compliant with stormwater management regulations as well as the Falmouth stormwater regulations. So that, as well as the wildlife corridor in the back portion of the lot. So those were really our, you know, design constraints, is keeping the stormwater for the existing site, capturing the new stuff, as well as staying out of the wildlife easement. Essentially, that wildlife easement is, you know, no permanent structures, no permanent disturbance to it. So this site does slope down. The topography slopes down to this lot here, drops off a good fifty feet in the back there. So we're proposing a retaining wall along the back here. It's about ten feet maximum height along the back there. This is the A and R plan.
Excuse me, could you please, no, go back to the, that one. No, no, back again.
Yeah, this is the A and R plan.
Right there. See the shaded area?
Yes.
That's, that one. What is that?
So that is the septic system easement. We put that in an easement. We're going through Board of Health permitting that right now. If, so that would require a variance from Board of Health to maintain the existing septic system for this existing property. If, if that-
It appeared it would be under the parking lot for the new building.
Correct, it will be. It's a-
It's also on a different parcel. I think that's the issue. It's on a different parcel.
Yeah, so the variance would be for a septic system not on, not serving the lot that it's on, which requires a variance. There's, so, we were asked by the Board of Health to evaluate doing a shared system, which we've prepared a design for, and it's very feasible to provide a shared system. We're looking at some innovative technology, a Presby system, which, you know, is a nitrogen-sensitive system, and it would be, basically treat both lots. So just tie in the two septic systems and pump to the Presby system. So, you know, from a critical path, you know, we wanted to keep this system and get the new building in the ground. So this was our, you know, quickest path to getting people, getting this building serviced. So there's, we are on the next Board of Health hearing, and we'll have a definitive answer on that. But either way, shared system won't require a variance. And we have done the soil testing out here. It's coarse sand, which most of Falmouth has. So it's, you know, it's good material for a septic system.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Another question?
Yep.
Floor elevation in the basement is one twenty-eight, yet the ground elevation is one forty-one.
Correct.
That implies you're gonna have a lot of earth moving and a very large retaining wall.
Uh, so- It's, so this site is sloped quite a bit, so you'd be surprised. I'll just go back to the cover. For, you know, the building's twenty-eight thousand square feet of usable space. Where this footprint, the building's about ten thousand square feet, and we're only proposing about twenty thousand square feet of pavement coverage. So it's actually a relatively low-impact development. To your point where the building's sticking out of the ground, yeah, so the, the basement will be a structural wall. So it will be this, essentially, the west side of this building will be at grade, and it will meet back up here.
With no arrow on it. Which is the west side of the building on that?
So, yeah, this is true north here, so plan, west side. This'll be at grade. This'll basic, 'cause essentially, we're keeping this existing driveway. So we're meeting grade at, both at this road and at the intersection here, as well as maintaining the existing septic system there. So those were really design constraints. The majority of the earthwork will be along this retaining wall, and it'll just be filled there. So it'll, really won't be much disturbance to the actual site. I don't know if we have the architectural plan, but... Landscaping code plan? So this actually shows the limit of work and kind of the footprint of the site. So for a twenty-eight thousand square foot building, I think the total disturbance is about fifty thousand square feet. So it's actually a relatively low-impact site.
Yeah, I have a question. Is, because you're building more than ten thousand square feet, because you're in an industrial park, you don't have to go to the Cape Cod Commission? Is that what's going on here?
Yeah, Jeff could speak to that a little better than I could, but my understanding is-
Ten thousand square feet, you first go, get to come to us and refer to the Cape Cod Commission, but I think there's something in the industrial park that gives you the right to skip that. Is that what's going on here?
Correct, because of the development agreement.
So it's, it's covered under the development agreement, okay.
Right.
I thought I needed to refresh my memory.
So they kinda pushed that, as part of that covenant, they pushed it to the planning board.
I just need to refresh my memory. Thank you very much.
And excuse me, the EDIC, which is also very important out here, has also submitted a letter in support of this project. And they're a party to the development agreements. They're fully aware of the project and it's-
Did you hear that before? This point, was this brought up before? I'm just wondering, did I misinter something? Okay, I got it. 'Cause normally at ten thousand, this is a big building, we normally-
Yeah.
We say take it to the Cape Cod Commission and come back when you're done. Here you-
Right, exactly. So the disagreement kinda pushes it, the control to the planning board. But so it is, there's gonna be, you know, the building's gonna be, you know, twenty-eight thousand square feet. It's a good-sized building. And for this footprint, it's, you know, very minimal in terms of land disturbance, in my opinion.
I have a question about all the, all the parking. That will be all asphalt?
Yeah, so the, this will be new asphalt here. We kind of lucked out in a way where they had already built this access driveway along the back here. I'm not sure of the original purpose of that. It might have been for fire truck access. But so we're essentially just keeping the driveway to the site, which is entirely on us, our site. We're gonna run some new utilities along the edge of that pavement, which I'll get to. But so, we kinda lucked out where we have an existing driveway-
Have you thought about using some sort of permeable pavement for the parking? There's so much of it.
It's about twenty thousand square feet of pavement, and no, so we're proposing a series of catch basins and a proprietary water quarter volume unit to capture and treat a hundred percent of the rainwater from the impervious site and route it down to the existing kettle hole. It's a pretty deep, it's about twelve feet deep, that wooded area where the infiltration basin is. Pull that back up.
A lot of drainage.
Yeah, so it is a significant amount of drainage with the two buildings there, but it's actually, you know, it's coarse sand beneath the existing soils out there. So there's actually quite of excess volume within this depression for additional water. I won't get too much into the other stuff in terms of, this is the grading and drainage plan. I can speak a little bit to... So essentially, all the water's gonna flow to the east off this pavement. Any water that lands along this pavement is gonna flow to the back of the site. We're proposing Cape Cod burn along the back of the site in a series of catch basins. So water that gets captured here will run up into here, across, down here where the roof leaders from the building will tie in, and then out over here into the existing depression. In terms of the, the treatment out here, we're proposing, I can go to the last sheet here, give you a better idea about the actual watersheds. So, there's an existing high point along the back of the site here. So this is kind of a ridge of the site along this back portion where the lot was developed. This water today goes out through this wildlife easement and off the property. So as part of this development, you know, we're obviously developing within that watershed. So we're capturing all that area that flows off-site, and we're putting it back. So a hundred percent of the water captured onsite stays onsite, gets pre-treatment. It meets stormwater management criteria. We are having engineering review these. We haven't received their comments yet, but so that will be addressed. And hopefully by the next hearing, we'll have that addressed, have their comments and have addressed them.
With the deluge we get now in rainstorms, that could turn into a swimming hole.
Yeah, so one of the criterias is that it needs to drain within seventy-two hours. So we provide those calculations. So any water that gets in here, I think it, I think it's about thirty-six hours it drains in. So a day and a half for, if you got a eight-inch rainstorm, it would be empty in a day and a half, which meets stormwater requirements.
Just point of clarification. The endorsement letter from EDIC said it was a three-story building. This is still a two-story building, isn't it?
So there's three, there's three floors of usable space, the basement being the third floor. So it's a two-story building from your front elevation. And based on the grading, it's classified as a two-story dwelling, or a two-story building. But the basement will be usable space. It's gonna be the gym, training gym for the police officers, as well as some showers.
A time that says two-story, then says three-story too.
Yeah, I'm not sure that application, what, what it would set on it, but-
Three-story from the back.
Three-story from the back, well, really from the west elevation. That's the only, the walkout will be on the west side. As you come in that driveway, the rest of it'll be under, underground essentially. Roy Katignani of Conserve prepared the architecturals. He can answer any questions about the building use and... Any questions you have about the building, and I can answer any additional questions. But that's essentially my-
Do you have site questions, John?
Just one question.
Yep.
How many people will be in the building at a time? What's, what's your proposal? I believe it's-
David Aubrey will be here.
A maximum number, please.
My name's David Aubrey.
Yeah, I'll come up here.
Could you please come to the microphone?
Please.
Microphone, this is not a microphone.
Right, that one.
But you're on TV.
My name's David Aubrey. I'm, my wife and I are the developers of this project. So this is a municipal police training center, and you have with you a letter that was written by Mr. Robert Ferrulo, who is the executive director of the Municipal Police Training Commission for, for the, for the Commonwealth. This facility's gonna be used for two primary purposes. One is to train new recruits once a year in the time period from October through May, so in the off-season. And there will be approximately, at a maximum, about fifty recruits. In addition, there will be some training, in-service training. Commonwealth Massachusetts has instigated a minimum of thirty hours a year for all, for in-service training, for all existing officers. So there will be training onsite for them.
I was just trying to determine whether you needed sixty parking spaces or not, but if you're gonna have fifty people, then you need the spaces.
Well, you, you have staff coming in. And then you have the in-service training as well. So there may be some in-service training at the same time you have the other training.
Thank you.
Bob?
I think it's a good project. I've long felt that the Tech Park is way underutilized. I think we could be doing a lot more out there, and I think this is a, a good low-impact use of, of that site.
Jim, did you wanna comment now? Wait to hear the rest?
No, I think I just have one question on the site plan. The, the kettle you're referring to, the kettle hole, that is not a wetland. Is that correct?
Correct.
It drains by itself. It doesn't meet any wetlands definition, so you're allowed to dump as much water into it. It's just part of your site.
Correct, exactly. And there was, I think in twenty-twenty-one, they did some additional site work out here for the existing building. And there was, you know, there was a fully engineered stormwater management plan for that, that area, so.
I, I forgot, I had one more question.
Go ahead.
Will there be any fencing around that kettle hole?
There's no fencing, no. It takes portions of the road.
It's filled with trees, so on a-
It is, it's wooded.
Nature fenced it.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's pretty dense, you know. I don't think anyone's gonna be going down in there if they don't have to.
Okay, thank you.
It, it's not an open pit.
Okay.
Twelve feet sounds like a lot, but it isn't really.
It's full of water, it is.
Yes, that's true. For those, for those hours, not a good thing.
Yeah, I think it only fills up about three and a half feet. I'll have to double-check that, but it's not, you know, it's not filling up twelve feet.
All right, thank you.
Took longer to drain, we could stock it with trout.
Comment on the site plan? Okay, we'll go ahead and hear about the building.
Sure.
Hello again, Roy Katignani from Conserve Group. I am not an architect, but I employ five architects at my firm. And so one of them drew this, but I'm the lucky person to come before you. I'm happy to answer questions on the building. Full set of building plans has been prepared. It's a wood-framed structure. Served with an elevator, stairways. It's a typical Cape Cod look, I think. Has, you know, clapboard siding, shingled roof, wood floors. You know, inside, as you, as has already been mentioned, the lower floor, the lowest floor is for exercise area. Middle floor is classrooms. The upper floor is classrooms and some administration. I think the renderings are pretty accurate to what it will look like. There's some relief on the surface so that it doesn't look so massive. You, you know, one person, while mentioned, you know, gee, is it a two or a three-story building? Well, I'm glad you asked the question, right? Sort of looks okay. That's the idea. Doesn't look like a massive building. It really is largely buried into the ground. So it is three stories by the building code definition.
But the double hip roof really helps. It's really good-looking.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. So any technical questions, I'm happy to answer.
Bob?
Any plans for solar panels?
Yes, in fact, mentioned, I think, on our plans. There are a set of building plans. You don't have that in this particular view, but yes, that, that would be the plan.
I think one of the plans that flashed by had that.
Yes. There's a little diagram showing where on the roof. I think, you know, these days, the energy requirements are pretty rigorous, and solar really helps.
Other comments? No, it's a good project.
I just have a question. I, I think I heard that it is gonna be an enhanced nitrogen-reducing system that... The state's about to change the laws on it. Are we gonna be in compliance with the new?
So, there's no-
Not that you have to, I'm just trying to understand.
No, so the, no plans have been submitted that are nitrogen-sensitive. The Board of Health asked us to evaluate that, so we're looking into that right now. The Presby system does fit on the site, and it does provide that. So that's essentially the alternative we're looking at.
What's the parts per million that the Presby system does?
I don't have that data. I can get it for you, though.
You know, I'm just trying to understand for my own use, how, how the world's gonna deal with this thing that's coming at us from the state, and I just wondered what you're doing.
Really, the, the nitrogen reduction you get is, in the septic tank, it's essentially an insert. You can put in a septic tank. To your point, how effective are they? You know, that's to be seen. I, you know, I don't, the nitrogen-sensitive septic tanks that we put in, like the Enviro One tank, it's really just essentially plastic drapes that hang down into the tank, which basically promote the bacteria to do what they do. So, it's not state-of-the-art stuff.
That's a Board of Health issue, anyway. I was just-
Yeah, so as proposed with the Board of Health, it would be just a standard Title V system, and we keep the system that's out there. That said, we got about, I would guess, twenty-five feet at least to groundwater. So the sand beneath there's gonna act, well, it's gonna basically be a sand filter, so it's gonna get plenty of treatment from this site. The absorption field.
So you may not be impacted then by the, the changes the state's making.
Yeah, nothing has been, has gone through at the state level, as far as I'm aware. So we'd, no, we're not impacted by that with this project, but we've been asked to evaluate that. So at the next hearing, we'll know whether we're gonna do that or not.
Is there other information the professionals involved want to bring forward? I was sort of struck that there'll be no firearms training there. Is, did I read, read that right?
So that's correct, ma'am. There, there will not be any live firearms training at the facility.
Right.
David Aubrey, again, just to clarify, there will be firearm training. This is a police facility, but there will be no live ammunition used within, within the building. There may be some live ammunition stored in the building under lock and key for the police officers when they come in, so they can-
Then I guess I don't know what that means. You're going to shoot not bullets, what?
Electronic.
Yeah, so the training uses games, electronics.
Oh.
Yeah, to, to work through different scenarios. It's, it's pretty exciting, and I think we know that Jed would like to come in and see what it looks like, 'cause that's what he grew up doing.
Wow.
It's what you do out in the woods, run around?
Yeah.
Fake guns.
I just want to make it clear to anyone listening, it won't be out in the woods. Please, not.
And you do have a letter from Chief Farullo as well, so please take a look at that. I think that explains things a little bit better.
Right, thank you. Public comment?
Jeff Bergman, Associates of Cape Cod, uh, we're the current tenants on the other property here that we're looking at, eighty-one Tech Park Drive. Uh, we lease that facility currently. Uh, we've been involved in this process, and we're in support of it.
That's nice to hear. Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Dan Webb. I represent, uh, two abutters to this site. One is Neptune Properties is Lot eighty-five, just to the south of this site. The other is Float Realty Trust at Lot eighty-two across the street. Um, so we've been, we understand there's no live gunfire, no gunfire noise. I've been told by the applicant that no one is sleeping or residing in this facility, which makes sense, because we know the light industrial B-zone does not allow any residential uses. So in light of those stipulations, um, representing both of those abutters, uh, we would support the project. It sounds like a good thing. We would encourage the board to support it. Thank you.
It's nice to hear that. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Jed?
I guess the only items I would add is, you know, obviously, we've got new plans that were submitted tonight. There's some outstanding comments that we have, uh, related to the site plans, but I'm sure we can work through those with the applicant, uh, between now and the next meeting. Um, I do want to just make note that we did receive the engineering referral, uh, later this afternoon, so as soon as we get back to our desks, we'll forward it along to the applicant. Um, I believe in yours, in your packets, you also received a referral from the fire department, so again, if we didn't send that along, we will make sure to send it along to the applicant. But all looks good on, on our end. Just some minor questions.
Okay, good. So we will, um, do you think it'll be possible to prepare a positive motion for the next time?
We're always preparing positive motions for you. We have them just in the hopper already. But yes, we can certainly start one, um, and we'll have it ready for your next meeting if you choose to use it at that time.
So we'll continue to July twenty-fifth? Is that too soon? No, that will be good?
I think it's good.
Till July twenty-fifth. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a good project.
Thank you.
So... We have other things that we have on our list to discussion. In the, uh, we have discussed Emerald, the conversion of a dwelling discussion. This is where we were just changing a date. Right, so I didn't quite understand your comment, that, um, it needs more thought.
Was that in the summary that I sent you? Is that the comment you're referring to?
Yeah.
I can't remember exactly what I said, but, um...
I can't either, but I have sort of a mental footnote. You wanted something.
Too much happening. Um, right, so yeah, we did, we finalized, actually, this is Melinda's agenda item, so, um, we finalized the language. I'll let her just sort of summarize what we put together for you, but based on what you said at the last meeting is what we put together.
Right, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I got the notes from Jed. Thank you. Um, so for the date we took, we just tweaked, um, the way it sounded a little bit, so that it says the existing dwelling is in existence within ten years of the date of the special permit application.
Less awkward.
Less awkward, yes. Um, and then we, um, took out some things from each of the business and public use districts that we had added in to make it more, um, to match the single residence district, but we didn't want to change it so much. So we just, we just kind of neatened everything up a little bit without changing it as much as, as it was at the last meeting.
Okay, so is that clear enough, so that now we're ready to get that into a final form, and that's going to go to the Fall Town Meeting?
So...
Any concerns with it?
One item we do want to just cover is there's language in your single residence districts, in the single resident, double A, single A, B, and C, where it prohibits the additional bedrooms. That language was not included in the general residence district section, so we wanted to see if the board was comfortable with adding that in, or should we stick to what you had described at the last meeting, which was take out the date or adjust the date and just make the, the language consistent across zoning districts.
And the additional bedrooms will only be in, like, the business-owned areas. Is that correct?
General residence.
General residence and business-owned. Just general residence. So we're really limiting the scope of this. How much of our town is general residence? We're, what percentage?
Very little.
So we're taking it down to, like, five percent of town being available for this. So we're basically saying we really don't want to do this bylaw.
Well...
Which I thought made it clear. The board doesn't want to do it.
Right. All right, so...
Because I just want to make it clear, we're trying to do this to create, uh, additional housing, but this board has made a decision that we really don't want to do it.
So what I'm hearing...
That's honest.
That, it is honest, and that is the truth.
I'm fine with it. I just don't want to spend a lot of time charging for it, trying to make something happen when the board doesn't want it to happen. And I've, I've heard the message clear, because if we're only going to keep it in general residential, BFD.
No, no, that, so don't misunderstand. That's not what we're saying. It's just the restriction on adding...
Right, adding a bedroom, which...
Is what opens it up.
I know, but if you're trying to create units without adding bedrooms, you're really just creating bigger units. You're not really creating more housing.
Right.
It just kills it dead, basically, because the town doesn't want it, and that's what I've heard. And I'm fine to agree with the rest of the boards, but I don't want to pretend that we're doing the third low-hanging fruit, trying to create housing, because we're not.
We're, we're taking a nibble of that piece of fruit.
A very small nibble.
And we're going to come back...
What percentage here, the real key is that I want people to understand, is what percentage of our town is this going to apply to?
Could I just try to make something clear here? This was you reacting to a consultant who believed that adding the possibility of adding more bedrooms to big houses was a good way to create greater density, and the more places you allow it, the greater density you allow. And as soon as you do that, you have created, the board felt, the potential for rooming houses practically all over town, and the board didn't want to do that.
I was under the misconception that this was the third leg of creating more, more affordable housing.
Right.
Okay, and I, I've been under that misconception for ten years, but I'm, it's been made clear to me that we only want to do it, and I think you should represent to the town so they understand what percentage of the town this will really apply to.
I think the intention has been to do what you thought it was going to do, but when you look at the nuts and bolts of it...
We really don't want to do it.
Then, then, uh, when you see the downside of it, that's what's, what's changed people's minds. It wasn't...
I'm really fine. I just wanted to make it clear.
It is clear, and I think what happened was...
We're not...
We had been saying that was the third one, without actually thinking about it until it came right in front of us.
Right, when you really looked at it, it wasn't a good idea.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm fine with that.
Because our thinking all along on greater density has been, keep it in control in places where there's sewerage and places where there's already that kind of density and we're adding to it, so that we're creating more of a cluster of density, and it's not spreading out all over.
But we're not doing this in residential zones.
Right.
And I think ninety...
General residential.
Only general residential. Reginald One, A, B, and C, is how much of our town? Like, ninety percent of it?
That is right.
So we're, we're limiting it to, I, I think that everyone should understand clearly what percentage of our town we're limiting this bylaw to, and then at that point, I said, why are we even doing it?
So what we need to look at is how we can increase, uh, number of units in those other districts.
Some other way.
Some other way.
Some other way, and I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I was just, believe me or not, for ten years, I thought this was the third leg.
Well, yeah, we've talked about it.
People are finding a way. They're adding accessory units. They're putting, they're condominiumizing everywhere.
Well, the first two we did. You know, when we, when we did the, the first three components, we've done A and B. There was accessory apartment, which we charged into, and we just finished the multifamily, and the third piece that was supposed to be taking us further towards that goal, but we don't want it.
Yeah, it turns out it isn't.
If we don't like, once we looked at it, it's not what we want.
John, did you want to comment?
Uh, I had a question that I had asked Jed to research. I don't know if you had a chance to find out the answer to that.
I wasn't able to get to Gary today, um, with that answer, but I will for the next hearing, or for the next meeting.
What was the question?
The question is pertaining to, uh, three units or more. Does it require a fire suppression system?
Do be determined.
I can have that answer for the next time.
Okay.
Okay.
Because we, we discussed the last time, why hasn't this been used, and what's the expense? And it could be that, um, I, I converted a building, uh, last year, or two years ago, uh, and I had to put fire suppression system in the building, and then I also had to have a separate water line from the main water line into the building just for the fire. It was quite expensive to do it for just one more, one more room. But that might be, if it's a requirement everywhere, then that might be one of the reasons why we haven't seen very much of this happen.
Oh, okay.
I think it is in the building code. I think if, when you go to three units, you have to go to, like, black iron pipe and sprinklers and...
No, you don't have, it doesn't have to be black iron if it's residential.
Just resi... okay.
But still, it's a sprink, it's a expensive system.
Sprinkler system, and it's expensive.
It's a system, and, but Jed was going to find out.
Yeah.
That was my question to him.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Uh, Chapter three hundred, the special permit and site plan. Did you have a chance to look at the red print in that section and see if you're okay with it? Any comments? It looked unexceptional to me.
Perhaps by way of a summary, would you like me to? So, um, this topic has, had come up in the past. Jim had mentioned this to us, um, the idea of what do we require for site plans and special permits? What's the, the precision and classification that we would require for that type of filing? Um, and so we've worked closely with our associate town council, Brian Tobin, on this language, and essentially what it says is, when you're adjusting property lines, um, to registered land, then, and you're going through a site plan review or special permit process, then that's when you would meet that, um, sort of, uh, you would meet that classification or that level of precision.
So it's distinguishing between Land Court pieces...
Right.
And local determination pieces.
Right, registered land and non-registered land.
How does the parcel we just reviewed fit into that discussion?
Right, so, um, it fits in where although there is registered land, as they mentioned, it's Land Court land, and it's going through site plan review, but they're not adjusting any property lines.
They subdivided it. That's not a...
Correct.
That's not considered a property line adjustment.
Previous, that was a previous process. So they went through an A and R. They created the subdivision, right? They created the two lots. That process, they would meet Land Court standards.
Did they?
They did. In this process, where they go through site plan review, because they're not adjusting any property lines, the basic language here would say, you don't need to meet Land Court standards because you're not adjusting any further property lines.
The way you explained it to me, that these is not zoning bylaws.
Correct.
That these are policies, and this board has the opinion, can change the policies anytime they want.
Through a public hearing process, yes.
Through a public hearing, and voting the majority of the vote says yes.
Yes.
But I've never really heard us have a vote on it.
Not tonight. Tonight is simply to just, um, introduce the topic to you. If you're comfortable with moving forward, we would then publicize a public hearing. We would then invite public comment, et cetera, et cetera, and then you'd be able to vote on a potential change.
Which we want to do. So this will be an agenda item for the twenty-fifth?
Provided that everyone's comfortable with it.
Well, nobody objected yet. John?
If we're going to have a discussion about it, maybe you could find out how much land is affected. I don't think there's that much Land Court property that, and I don't think it's as difficult to meet the standards. It's just the plan.
Correct.
The plan to be recorded has to meet their standards.
Correct, yes.
I don't think it's that big of a deal, but if you could find out, is it ten percent of the land we have in the town of Thalm, is it thirty percent?
Not sure how to do that, but, um...
I just, I, I just don't think it's that big of a deal, but maybe I'm wrong.
But Jed, you explained to me that it really doesn't matter, because it's not a bylaw, it's a policy.
Correct.
And this board, we don't have to go to town meeting to change policies. We can do it by a simple vote of the majority of the board.
Technically, it's your rules and regulations.
And that's the part I didn't understand.
Oh, so this isn't going to town meeting?
Right.
That's the part I didn't understand, that you clarified now, that I thought it was an oversight, and we should have been doing this for years. But you pointed out that when it goes from two, two forty to three hundred, and it says right up the top, it's a policy, and that I didn't under...
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't following that either.
I didn't understand that.
Right.
And that's what I kept saying, we can't do it, but you said, you showed me clearly, as you go down two forty, it, it isn't in two forty.
Right.
It, it switches to, it says right up top the heading, policies.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations, which, uh, we're allowed to change ourselves.
Yes.
And I didn't, that was my fault. I did not understand that, but you made that clear to me.
Right. So if you want to change this section, you would, we would publicize it as a public hearing, and you'd do it through this process.
Okay, thank you.
He, you know, he explained that to me privately, and it dawned broke on my...
It finally came through.
It came through.
Yeah.
Also, I'd like to add one more thing.
Again, we may be able to change, we may be able to change the policy, but we can't change Land Court's policy.
No.
They're going to require, they have the requirements. We can't, we can't adjust that.
We're just making it clear by including it here.
We can change our policies that relates to special permits and site plan, and that's the part I didn't understand.
Okay.
That I do now.
But it, just to clear things up, too, as, as you said earlier about the A and R plan that just came before us, they have to get local permitting first, and then they petition to Land Court, and then land, they draw up a, a separate kind of plan for Land Court to Land Court standards. We don't see it. Land Court has its own set of rules and regulations, um, so that's why, um, like, to draw it to Land Court standards is really petitioning to Land Court. That's something they do on their own after they get local permitting.
The part I was concerned with, is Land Court standards require a review of all easements and all of the surrounding properties, and we've decided we don't have to review that. That doesn't matter to us. We waive that policy. That's what we've been doing.
So in certain circumstances, again, when they're adjusting property lines, that's when you get into it needs to meet Land Court standards, and that's where you start getting into that easement question.
That's only if it's Land Court policy.
If it's Land Court land, yes, registered land.
That's the other thing I didn't realize, either. It's only if it's Land Court land.
Players.
I was wondering whether it applied to all special permits, and that's where I was mistaken. I was way off base.
But you're referring to easements on abutting properties, not on, not on the properties that we look at for site plans. Those, we definitely want to know about the easements. Yes.
But sometimes properties, easements on abutting properties...
Are shared.
Have effects on the property next door, too. I mean, that's what I was talking about, but we, we have a policy that we can waive that, and we have, because it, it's not, if it's not Land Court, it's not our issue.
Right, exactly. So again, it would apply to registered land, that you would meet those standards.
And only if the property line is changing.
Right, again, with this new language.
So it's not a subdivision, right? That doesn't change it. It's the outside. Like we're saying, the A and R, that when we created this, when we did that, that's Land Court.
Correct.
Yes.
But we didn't have to do Land Court standards.
We did, and you did, because it was adjusting a property line.
I don't remember discussing...
You wouldn't. It, they put certain things on the plan, um...
Certi... yeah.
Certifications, and then, and then, once they get local approval, then they petition to Land Court. It's like a six-month process.
That was the business, about getting the surveyor's certificate stamped on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so it has to go through another process.
When they go to record it, the Land Court's going to make sure that you're done.
Oh, yeah, they, it's a long...
That's where it happens, when you go to the registry.
They have to petition and everything.
As the surveyor's, uh, stamp on it, and then we're in the clear.
Got it.
Okay. So next up, um, committee reports. Paul?
Yeah, I do have a committee report. I attended the Water Policy Management Committee meeting last night, and it was very well-attended, well over a hundred people, and they went over a lot of really, really serious issues that affect us in the long term. And I put in your packet a, uh...
And they went over a lot of really, really serious issues that affect us in the long term, and I put in your packet a. A couple of PowerPoint presentations that I put together last, last night. And I'm not going to go through them, and I don't think. It's necessary to.
Where are they, Paul?
Details, but I have a, there's a summary sheet here, yeah. And the first one is a presentation by. My, I guess Vicki will.
In one of these.
Water superintendent, and basically she spent a lot of time putting together a presentation on why we need.
Amy Lowell.
Amy Lowell, why we need to sewer the Maravista and T-Ticket pass. And basically, the summary is on the sheet I just gave you, and if you want more detail, it's in the attachment of the PowerPoint presentation. Surring's the only way to achieve nitrate removal in the lower watershed, for a number of reasons. The targeted watershed plan was approved by DEP in 213 for the town. New regulations to advance approved plans or require IA on all properties on impaired watersheds, which would be 75% of the town. Alternative systems are not appropriate, or proven in a large scale regulatory framework, they don't really work. Fall town meeting article will request $4.5 million for design and permitting only. And the preliminary plans anticipate to be 600 properties served by gravity and grinder pumps in that one area. And funding for an outfall evaluation and a diverting pilot plant project will be included. There was a lot of controversy about the pilot plant, the green committee was there again, and people are up in arms about it, but. The consultants of the water quality management committee on item two looked at diverting, diverting technologies, and basically the efficacy of urine technology is what they were trying to look at. An independent analysis shows nitrogen from urine ranges from 31 to 82%, however, the studies show that urine diversion range from only 19 to 56%. So they're talking about developing a pilot program, maybe 50 people if they're willing to participate, to find out the actual results. The green people were there and they got up and said, well, the daddy using doesn't really apply and so forth, I don't know what daddy you can use unless you do a pilot plan.
I have a question, why aren't these studies in point three under two enough, why do they have to do some more?
Well, because people turned down this particular project at the last town meeting.
They did.
Because of the consideration for union, or urine diversion technology is not included.
And now they're saying that.
So they're saying, okay, let's look at it, find out, do a pilot study, and find out what the real answer is.
Why is, my question is, why isn't this the real answer? Yeah, it takes out some, but not much.
Good question.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm reading.
Well, if you read the detail in the presentation made by, by the consultant, it's really not effective.
Right, that's what this says.
But, you know, people are insisting that they look at it.
But they're not giving up, you're saying.
And you look at the detail that's in this presentation, there's a lot of things in there, how often people are at home, how often they use the toilet, do they go to work, and what percentage where they use it. It's easier for men to use a diversion system than women, and the technology, what to do to remove it from your house, to pastorize and go forward, really hasn't been developed very well. So there's a lot of real serious issues there, and rather than just say, we're not going to consider it, the water quality management committee said, let's look at it, let's do a pilot study of many 50 properties.
AI or IA, you used the terminology, what does that mean? You said, when you described this, was it AI systems?
IA.
IA, what is that, what does IA mean?
That's the denitrification.
It's the innovative alternative system. The innovative.
Alternative, that's the two key words I needed to understand, thank you.
And then, previously I showed details of various.
Alternative, I didn't understand, that was, went right over my head.
Well, the problem is.
Did you know it?
No.
You laughing, you were laughing to me. No one else asked the question, we all heard it.
Not to be confused with AI.
Right, right, I was confusing.
Okay, so they went a little further, and there's a summary here, the average amount of urine collected implies the urine collection would be about 36% potential reduction, that's all it would be. Based on limited data, that's all it would do. And the credits inlet widening and fertilizer reduction and other things like that, 100% of residential population would have to require urine diversion to really have an effect, and that's really not feasible.
That should be interesting at town meeting.
Did everybody get one of these?
Yes.
IA, innovative alternative, I got to remember that.
It was a very interesting meeting, I mean, there were well over 100 people there, and it went on until the library closed.
Did you have a second one?
There are some really big things that I've heard about it that people understand, right now Falmouth approves.
No, not a second copy, a second report.
It passes title V, under the new bylaws, it won't. So, and all these houses, that, next time they go to sell their house, if they have a cesspool, they're going to have to put an IA system in.
Not necessarily, but I guess, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, the town has two options. It's to create these watershed permits, or in, if they can't do that within a certain amount of time, and again, not an expert here, then IAs come into more, come into play. So essentially, I think the first step the town is looking at is, is creating these watershed permits.
This will have a very serious effect on people selling single family homes.
Yep.
Huge effect.
That they, right now, you could, your house can pass, right now you could go out and get a title V and it passes. The town passes this bylaw, next time you go to sell your house, it automatically fails, whether you do anything or not. If, if it's in, if it's a cesspool, or I heard also they're putting a line within 300 feet of a body of water, that it's automatic. So that everyone's going to be forced to spend an additional $20,000 roughly to comply with the new systems, that's the round numbers. I had a little chat with the board of health, just to, not on a planning board issue, but just how it affects my business, because it's serious.
If we're going to, we should have this as an agenda item.
Well.
Because we all have an opinion on this, and.
Right, so, thank you.
It can be very deep, it can be.
It's crazy, actually, so.
So, correct.
Unfortunately, the meeting was not videotaped. So you're not going to be able to see the meeting, but it was a very good meeting.
Well, we're lucky that we have you to report back on it, thank you very much.
Am I lucky that I went?
No, you're, you're a really good soldier. Planning department report.
In the interest of time, we really don't have much to, to report, other than we're just, you know, keeping busy with all the projects that we've got moving, but recodification is really our main focus right now. So as we march towards town meeting in the fall, we anticipate having our public hearings for zoning amendment changes that you guys want to make. Likely in late August, early September.
Right, we'll have to.
Mark your calendars.
And the recodification committee has not met very often or produced very much.
Yeah, so we, because things have been so busy in the, in the department, we had to cancel our June meeting.
Right.
So our upcoming July meeting is going to be, what are we sending forward to the planning board? And I think we've got a, we've got a good list of things that are ready to go, so fear not, we will be bringing homework assignments forward for you.
Okay, in that case, announcements, any announcements?
I just have one thing to add, every year after you guys reorganize, we have to sign a piece of paper for the chairman, vice chairman, clerk, and then Jed, the assistant town planners, need to sign it so that we all have authorization to sign documents on behalf of the planning board.
Okay.
So I need Charlotte and Paul to sign this, and then everyone needs to sign underneath.
And we're going to do that tonight?
Yes, I'll just pass it down, there's three sheets, three separate letters, they all say the same thing, they're just to three different people.
Okay.
If you want to sign it after we leave.
Just start handing it along now, we're about to leave.
Yeah.
Future general correspondence. There was none general.
Nothing, nothing in your packets?
No, we got a couple of letters, but they were specific projects. Future agenda items.
I have one. Excuse me, this Longfellow project at the entrance here that we're involved in a lawsuit, could we get an update of that at the next meeting?
Sure.
I understand the attorney may have been dismissed, but I don't know what happens to the lawsuit.
Which, which lawsuit?
Probably right here, the Longfellow restaurant over here. You were named in a lawsuit.
Thank you, if they spelled my name right.
You didn't get the big package?
We'll all have to chip in.
They're coming to take you away.
Perhaps.
I'm demedified.
Considering the water quality management committee's work is so important, would you like to invite them perhaps at a future meeting to come in and provide a presentation to the board? If we have a slow night?
Yeah.
Because that's likely to be a detailed summary.
That's a yes?
Paul and I were talking about it today, we thought maybe that might be a good idea.
Okay.
Pam, there's three sheets.
Oh, let me close that back.
I have four, Pam?
Nope.
I have a pencil.
Thank you.
So.
The other announcement is, don't come downtown tomorrow.
Oh, street fair.
Because why?
In a car.
You can't park, you can't walk, you can't do anything.
Street fair.
You want people to come downtown.
Big fair tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Yep.
I avoid downtown anyway, summer, generally speaking, but that's good to know, thank you very much.
Well, I really have to bring something up because he said don't come downtown, okay? I am having a pop-up art with 20 artists in my parking lot as part of the street fair.
Correct.
And I think you should all come down and enjoy it, because I'm waiving the gallery fee and the artists are selling them cheap to help sell, these are artists that they couldn't find a place in my gallery, so I'm giving them the use of our parking lot to sell their art very inexpensively, and I think you should all come downtown.
Now, can we park on your property?
On by bike.
We have tents up for, they're all going to be art, we're selling art on the parking lot.
This is good to know, and we should all support art. Okay, now, our next meeting, as we've heard continually, tonight is July 25th, so I hope that we will all be here and that Pam will be able to be back with us, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.